Good evening. I would like to call the June 25th, 2018 Belbrook City Council Meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards is absent. Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. McGill is absent. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here. May I have a motion to excuse Mr. McGill?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to excuse Mr. McGill that was seconded by Mrs. Seager Lawson. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
May I have a motion to excuse Mr. Edwards?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And roll call.
Okay, that was a motion by Mrs. Mittelstetter to excuse Mr. Edwards, seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Formal approval of City Council regular meeting minutes of June 11th, 2018. Does any member on the City Council have corrections or additions to the regular City Council meeting minutes of our last meeting?
None.
None, Mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements. We have one announcement and one new special guest this evening, and we are hiring a new firefighter. Mr. Lips, would you please come up and we will read your, give you your oath of office? Thank you very much for joining the City of Belbrook. We've got a great group of guys over there to work with, and so thank you very much for joining. So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joshua Lips,
I, Joshua Lips.
solely swear that I will support
Solely swear that I will support
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Ohio
and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
and will obey the laws thereof
and will obey the laws thereof.
and that I will
and that I will.
in all respects
in all respects.
uphold and enforce
uphold and enforce.
the provisions of the Charter
the provisions of the Charter.
and the ordinances of Belbrook
and the ordinances of Belbrook.
and will faithfully discharge
and will faithfully discharge.
the duties of
the duties of.
the office upon
the office upon.
which I am about to enter.
which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
And a little paperwork. Good day. I'd just like to thank all of our fire department to come out and welcome Mr. Lips to the fire department, and thank you all for supporting the city and doing such a great job. So, thank you very much, and good luck. That is all I have for Mayor's announcements this evening. Public hearings of ordinance. We have one. Or, let's see, ordinance 2018-2. Mrs. Seager Lawson.
Okay. Ordinance number 2018-2, an ordinance adopting the revised City of Belbrook Personnel Manual, whereas the City of Belbrook periodically reviews its personnel policies and procedures, and whereas the city has made revisions to the Personnel Manual that incorporates these policies and procedures, and whereas the city desires to adopt the revised Personnel Manual, now therefore the City of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1 that the revised Personnel Manual attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference setting forth personnel policies and procedures for employees of the City of Belbrook is hereby adopted. Section 2, that this ordinance shall take effect August 1st, 2018. I think this is the second reading of this one, so we've discussed this before the last one.
Do we have any questions on City Council? What were the major changes again?
The major changes in this had to do with, let's see, sick leave, which was page 25, section 5.4. There were just some minor changes that outlined how much sick leave you could take for an appointment, or surgery, or the birth of a child. And then that was just kind of a secondary change in going through everything. One of the main changes was to the list of exempt employees. It's section 2.6 on page 6, with the addition of the deputy fire chief and the deletion of the fire captain. And then there were some other just grammatical punctuation things that were made, too.
I know we talked about this last time. Two small changes. It's good to keep looking and updating our manual as we move forward. Do we have any other questions for our city manager?
I don't know.
I've got it, Mayor.
This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience that would like to give some input, we, this is the final time. We had the resolution, or the introduction last council meeting. Going once, going twice, I call this public hearing closed. May I have a motion to pass ordinance number 2018-2?
I move that we adopt ordinance number 2018-2.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
And roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Seager Lawson to adopt ordinance number 2018-2, an ordinance adopting the revised City of Belbrook Personnel Manual, seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have a couple introductions of ordinances this evening. Ordinance 2018-3. Mr. Schweller?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Ordinance 2018-3, an ordinance authorizing the city manager/finance director to submit the tax budget for fiscal year 2019 to the Greene County Auditor. Whereas the city is required to prepare to submit the tax budget for 2019 to the Greene County Auditor no later than July 20th, 2018, following a public hearing, now therefore the City of Belbrook hereby ordains. Section 1, that the tax budget for fiscal year 2019 is attached hereto be approved for submission to the Greene County Auditor to guarantee the city's eligibility for the allocation of local government funds in 2019. And Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. This is a recurring item each year. This is the first step in the allocation of the local government funds, and it's a certification of our ballot voted upon property tax levies. It has to be done in advance of July the 20th, so this is our first reading for it. Anything else to add, or?
No, pretty straightforward.
Any questions? I know we do this every year. It's sort of a bookkeeping kind of thing.
And our budget is largely based on the prior year. There's nothing really too earth-shaking that goes into place at this time. It's pretty much same as last year with known modifications.
The only, the only major difference in the bottom line is just with the water fund. You had the receding end of the grant funds for 2018, and then the expenditure of those. So that was a pretty large item. It was like 1.2 million. So that difference would be a reduction for both revenue and expenditures in 2019. So that was one of the only major differences. And then the incorporation of the newest passed fire levy for revenues for 2019.
Any other questions for city manager? Seeing none, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2018-3?
I'd like to move the introduction of ordinance 2018-3.
May I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to introduce ordinance number 2018-3, an ordinance authorizing the city manager/finance directors to submit the tax budget for fiscal year 2019 to the Greene County Auditor. That was seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have one more introduction this evening. Ordinance number 2000... Let me just do that one. 2018-4. Mr. Greenwood?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2018-4, an ordinance amending Part 4 Traffic Code of Belbrook Municipal Code, whereas the City of Belbrook periodically reviews its policies and procedures, and whereas the city has determined that sections of the traffic code are duplicated from sections of the Ohio Revised Code, and whereas the city will use the Ohio Revised Code section when appropriate, and whereas the city desires to eliminate the sections of the traffic code that are duplicates of the Ohio Revised Code. Now therefore the City of Belbrook hereby ordains, Section 1, that the following sections of Chapter 474, bicycles, mopeds, and motorcycles generally of the Belbrook Municipal Code be deleted in their entirety. 474.07, safe riding relations, regulations for bicycles. 474.08, parking locks. 474.09, parents' responsibility. 474.10, suspension of riding privileges and impounding of bicycles. 474.12, safe riding regulations for mopeds. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect August 2nd, 2018. We do this periodically to check, see if we're duplicated and we're...
So this was one of the items that was left on the list of sections of the code that needed to be cleaned up by the previous city manager. So these, again, were just duplicates of what was already in the Ohio Revised Code, which is what our officers use whenever they have to issue any type of, you know, citations or information to the public. So this is just deleting the remaining sections of that code.
And matching the Ohio Revised Code.
Correct.
Gotcha. So, for people who don't understand, if we're going to prosecute these, which is obviously minor infractions, we'd much rather do that under the Ohio Revised Code than the city, because if anything did come up, we would be on the hook for the expenses of anything that would come out of that. So, it's always nice to follow the Ohio Revised Code. Any questions on City Council? Is an introduction of an ordinance. Seeing none, may I have a motion to pass, or introduce, I'm sorry, ordinance 2018-4?
I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number 2018-4.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Greenwood to introduce ordinance number 2018-4, an ordinance amending Part 4 Traffic Code of the Belbrook Municipal Code, seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have one resolution this evening. Resolution 2018-T. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. City of Belbrook Resolution Number 2018-T, a resolution approving the replat and vacation of the drainage and access easement on Lot 1D of Highview Terrace, Section 1, and replacing it with an adjusted easement on Lot 1F. Whereas the Ohio Revised Code sets forth the Planning Board as the municipal plating authority, and whereas the requested plat meets the requirements of the city's zoning code and subdivision regulations, and whereas the Belbrook Planning Board has recommended approval of the replat and vacation of the drainage and access easement on Lot 1D of Highview Terrace Subdivision, Section 1, and replacing it with an adjusted easement on Lot 1F of the same subdivision. And whereas the City of Belbrook subdivision regulations stipulate that changes to a recorded plat shall be approved by action of the Belbrook City Council. Now therefore the City of Belbrook hereby resolves, Section 1, that the replat and vacation of the drainage and access easement on Lot 1D, and replacing it with an adjusted easement on Lot 1F in the Highview Terrace Subdivision, Section 1, is hereby approved for recording purposes. Section 2, that the mayor and clerk of council are authorized to affix their signatures to the revised record plat. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
I believe we have a quick presentation.
Okay, so I've got three pictures to show everybody. This is actually showing the entire lot that we're discussing, and... This drainage easement is actually right here in the middle. So this is taking a look at the entire parcel, which has been purchased in the sub, the owner is the one that has requested this. This is a zoomed-in version of the actual change in the easement. So if you take a look, the top line is where it was, and then the bottom line, where it kind of bows out slightly, is the, the new easement. At its widest point, which is right there in the middle, it's less than 10 feet that this thing is moving. So if, if you take a look now, there wasn't, in the packet, it didn't make it in, but there's an executive summary that Dawn, the assistant to the manager, had put together. The Clemens Development Company's engineer took a look at this. Our engineer took a look at it. Nobody had any concerns. And what they had done is, they have also petitioned to FEMA to move the flood plain, which is not what they're doing here. They're just moving the drainage easement. But they'd also petitioned to FEMA to move the flood plain, which they recognized did need, did in fact need to be moved. And they do have their preliminary approval for that. They're waiting on the final approval, which I guess takes quite a bit of time to receive back from FEMA. So this, what this was going to allow the property owner to do was to move their home that they're building just a few feet farther back, and it would, it would be off of that drainage easement. So, I do have an aerial view here of the actual lot. And the drainage easement that we're talking about actually is like right in here. So it's where they'd already cleared off a little bit, which them, them clearing that easement, you know, is allowable as long as they don't build on top of it. So this went before Planning Board on June 7th, and they, they approved this. This isn't the first time that this has happened. There has been vacation and moveage, or moving of drainage easements before in this Highview Terrace subdivision. So, that's pretty much it.
Any questions on council? This is obviously quite a difficult area to build on, and sometimes they can get down to the degree this has already been approved by the Planning Board, correct?
Correct. And minutes were sent out of the Planning Board meeting, but they were draft minutes that have not yet been approved by Planning Board, I should mention.
Yep.
And you said the engineer took a look at this, and was okay with it?
Yes.
I think what's different about this is the involvement of floodplain. I mean, a lot of times we have these, and it doesn't really involve a floodplain. So, basically they want to move the house downhill?
They're, they're just moving it a few feet back where it would have encroached on the existing drainage easement. And then after it was reviewed, the drainage, they're requesting that the drainage easement be moved a little bit, because the floodplain is actually being moved, and that's being approved by FEMA. And it's just, it's, it's not that much. It's just under 10 feet.
So the two aren't really related? It just...
They're independent.
Correct.
They're independent. The floodplain wasn't, was just noticed that it needed to be adjusted because it wasn't recorded correctly.
So those are two different actions.
The easement's not coming into the floodplain?
No. No, the easement is not coming into the floodplain. But it does show that the work that the property owner took on this by petitioning to FEMA to move the floodplain.
It's a big deal to go to FEMA and pay the engineers to be able to do those
Yeah.
water flow and all those studies.
Yeah.
So that easement, is that like a, just an access?
Uh huh.
Or is it going to be a trench, or?
It's a drainage easement, so it's not our easement. It's platted easement, but it's meant there for drainage.
So it could be whatever they deem the pipe?
It's platted, so we don't enforce the rights of those.
They can't build on it.
It would be someone who enforced the plac covenant and all that, so.
Okay. That's all I got.
Any other questions on council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-T?
I move that we adopt Resolution 2018-T.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Mittelstetter to adopt Resolution 2018-T, a resolution approving the replat and vacation of the drainage and access easement on Lot 1D of Highview Terrace, Section 1, and replacing it with an adjusted easement on Lot 1F, seconded by Mr. Schweller. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, city manager's report.
Okay, something that occurred on Monday, June 18th, was I attended a MVERMA, which is the Miami Valley Risk Management Association Board of Prestige meeting, which I serve on. And at that meeting, Belbrook was designated the overall winner of the 2017 Standard of Excellence Award. This is actually the second year in a row that Belbrook has received that. What they do is they look at the, they assign a dollar amount for the number, the amount of losses in that year, and they divide that by the number of employees. And ours was half of what the second place even got. So they, they award that to four people, and we were overall. So it was like $35 worth of loss per employee in the year 2017, which was great. So that is in our hallway, being displayed with the rest of the awards. And then in addition, the fire department, police department, and water, and wastewater department all received zero loss awards for 2017 as well. So that was actually the fifth year in a row for water and wastewater. And they have a plaque that has the number, the year numbers designated that they received that award. Police department actually got a plaque for their three-year award. And then Fire Department, I think that that was the first year that they received that, that award. So that was pretty, pretty, pretty good stuff in terms of what our, some of our departments are doing. Fire staffing. So tonight we welcomed our new firefighter, Joshua Lips. He started on Monday, June 18th. He previously worked as a part-time employee for the City of Franklin. And we are, we are working to hire, after the passage of the ordinance tonight, with the Personnel Policy Manual, the position of deputy fire chief, which we are going to post as an internal promotion, and be able to hire that position, hopefully. And then we would be able to backfill that if it's a successful promotion, internal promotion with another full-time firefighter. So that would be great. So we're moving forward in that direction and getting those positions filled. IT services. We now have a information technology services contractor providing the city with all-inclusive support from one vendor, which has been great. They started on Thursday of last week, and it's, it's been really good moving forward, so I feel good about that. Upper hillside. The PRV, or pressure-reducing valve pit, has been installed. There's still power that needs to be ran to it, and then some fiber op, or fiber communications that still need to be connected. And we're looking to see if we can do an aerial version of that. We're still waiting for the full assessment from DPNL, which we thought we would have that today, and now they're saying at the end of the week. So, that's one small piece that needs to be finished off with that project. I did include pictures of the PRV pit because I thought that it was much larger than what I was expecting, so I thought it was neat to see that. So what that does is, it's, it's the connection between the high pressure to the low pressure, and it, it works as a, a way to mitigate that pressure between the two, the two lines. So it's, it's a pretty cool, pretty cool piece of equipment that went in the ground.
And where is that located?
I knew that that was going to come, and I can't remember off the top of my head. It's, it's at the end of one of the cul-de-sacs on the back half of that plat, and I can't remember what the name of the cul-de-sac is off the top of my head. I should have totally known that. So, they have left to do...
It had to be that big, though, in order to get in there and work on it, I guess, right?
Yes. Well, they actually thought that it would be a little bit smaller. I think everybody was a little surprised at how big it was. It's massive. So, yeah, it's, it's large. The other things that need to be done are the restoration and the paving, and that's all on schedule. They're thinking that some of the yard restoration, though, might be in August or September, because that's the best time in which to seed yards. So the actual final grass seed and things like that probably won't go down until August or September, late August or early September, just to make sure that it's got the best chance of taking. So that's upper hillside, and that's pretty much it for me.
Does anyone have any questions for our city manager this evening?
Yeah, Mayor, just one. On the upper hillside project, are we, in fact, everyone's hooked in the new system now, and the water's running? We've turned the switch, and now we've got the high pressure, or the low pressure's been converted to the high pressure, and it's so far, knock on wood, no events?
No.
Good.
It's been great.
Good.
I think it was 113 total connections, and moving 40 meters from inside to outside. So it's been a lot of work, and they really, they did a great job.
It's amazing they got it done that fast.
Yeah, Dale's had nothing but great things to say about that contractor that we used.
Brackney, whatever?
Yep, Brackney. They've done a great job.
Good.
Did they get their increased water pressure?
They did. They did.
I bet that's, that's great.
They were all, I know that Dale, the service director, was really worried about that, because, you know, when, whenever you add that increased pressure where it hasn't existed before, if you have some old, you know, appliances and such inside, it could cause issues, and it hasn't. So, we were really worried about that, and it, it didn't cause an issue. But I mean, they made sure to make contact with everybody and, you know, checked in on them, and, you know, they were checking the, any leak indicators on the meters and things like that to make sure that there were no issues, and didn't find any. So that's been great.
Good deal.
Good deal.
Any other questions for our city manager?
No.
Seeing none, we'll move on. Committee reports. Service?
Nothing tonight.
Safety?
Just like to mention Fort July Hollow Way coming up. Please, everybody be safe. A lot of things be going on, so that's all I got.
Finance and audit.
Mayor, just I'd ask the city manager for an update on the audit. I think we're still in process, and we'd give them all the information they need, so hopefully we should be wrapped up sooner than later, but we all know that, what that means from year to year.
Yep.
Okay.
Community affairs?
Nothing tonight.
Any old business? New business? I see one item on here. Request for appeal for village review board decision on 79 West Franklin.
Okay, so, we have, in the packet, there is the language from the village review board appeals procedure. So this is part of our property review commission, or I'm sorry, this is part of our zoning code. So, there's an appeals procedure. In Section 1, it's underlined the appropriate section that we're going to be discussing. So, basically what happened with the property at 79 West Franklin Street is, they went before, the property owner went before the village review board on August 9th of 2017. The village review board instructed the property owner to make three changes to the property. One of them was a pretty extensive change to the property, which was the installation of a gable which was not there. And I sat down with the property owner, had a discussion, and we talked about the gable, and he noted how expensive it would be to install a gable, cut into the roof, and make that happen. He is requesting that he not install the gable, and that he do some of the other things that the village review board requested of him, which was to install railings on the porches. He also offered to install shutters on the north end of the property, and he also offered to pay the $250 fine. So, this all has been going on for quite a long time, as everybody is aware. And I told him that there was a 45-day window in which to appeal the village review board's decision. We are very much past that, as that decision was made on August 9th. So it is up to council to make a motion as to whether they would like to accept or deny the request for appeal. If you accept the request for appeal, then what would happen is the property owner would come before council at the next meeting. He would, he would basically go through what he is asking council possibly approve as a revised, a revised change to the property. At that time, council would be able to approve or deny that request. So I know that this has been...
So what's the other option, so we can...
You can, you can deny the request for appeal, which would uphold the village review board's decision.
Or accept the appeal.
But they, they made their decision in August of 2017, and there have been no changes to the property. So at this point, there's a $250 fine on the table, and then we would have to see how we would proceed after that, based on any changes that are made to the property or not.
So their ruling, though, was to deny his request for modification? So they said, no, you need to go back to what we approved?
Basically, they said that he needed to do two things. He needed to install a gable. He needed to install basically a fake window on the north end of the property, and he also needed to install railings on both of the porches on the east and the west side of the property.
And at this point, he's agreed to do the railings?
Pay the fine, and then install shutters on the front.
Everything but the gable.
Well, and the fake window, which was going to be complicated because there's a restroom on the other side, and it, it was going to be a costly and complicated expense, so. expense, so.
Can we have any input from the Village Review Board on this, as far as what their thoughts are, or how they'd want to proceed, or?
No, I have not went back to the Village Review Board.
So I guess at this point, you grant the appeal, and then we hear him.
And if they have something to say, then they would come to?
That's, we only have two options, so.
Yeah, you can?
If you're saying, we got to make the decision tonight, and, yeah, so that's?
They can show, they can show up at the hearing, we can listen to their input and find out what they think about it all.
And we can decide that?
I hate to punish someone to death, and we, at some point in time?
We can modify it, and, so he's only got 250 on the table now, so, which I think he's agreed to pay.
And that's all that?
But he wants to negotiate. Of the three things to do, he really only wants to do one of them. Okay.
Why? No, he's going to do, he's going to put shutters?
He was going to add shutters in lieu of the window.
Sort of, a compromise.
It's a compromise, but it's aesthetically pleasing.
Correct.
Which is what we're after.
Yeah.
On the streets.
But we don't have a mechanism now to say that he can do that, so we have to come to appeal and accept the appeal after negotiating a settlement.
Correct.
So there really isn't much on the table to discuss.
The only thing I'm worried about is actually following through. It seems like we've had commitments before that weren't.
And, and I think that would be part of the appeal process, to set those standards.
They'd be one of our conditions, I think, as far as giving the time, I mean.
So, I guess, at this point, I would need a motion?
To either accept?
To accept.
The request for appeal or deny.
Accept the request of appeal of the Old Village Review Board decision on 79 West Franklin Street. May I have a motion to accept? So you only have two options. If you don't accept the appeal, then he's got to do everything, and that's that.
I would move to accept the appeal.
And, because I think we can hear it out, at least, and then, and then you can still?
We can still deny it.
So you're not giving out anything?
We're not, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll second the motion.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to accept the request for appeal, the VRB decision at 79 West Franklin Street, and that was seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
No.
Mrs. Seeger-Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. And, so that's that, so we'll have, when do we, when will we schedule that?
It would be the next meeting, which would be July 9th.
Okay. All right. Open discussion. Forrest?
Nothing, no.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Nothing tonight.
Mrs. Seeger-Lawson?
I just wanted to remind everybody who's a runner that the Belbrook 5K is July 29th.
July 29th, Belbrook 5K, and it's for the sports?
It's?
Or which one specific?
It's for football.
Football. Okay. Mr. Schweller?
Just wanted to commend the City Manager on pursuing ordinance 2018-4.